This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, folks. The time being 4:45. I'd like to call this meeting to order the July 11th, 2024. We will start off with the Pledge Allegiance. Okay, we have June 20th and June 27th. June 6th, do you want to look at the revisions? Okay, June 20th? Anyone? Make a motion. We approve them as written.
Ruggles, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
27th? Any just, any concerns? Make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye. Motion passes. June 6th, there are some revisions. They are in red on page two. Everyone okay with the corrections on page two? Make a motion. We accept the minutes as corrected on June 6th, 2024.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next on our list. We have Shiloh Lovinsky. I shall. Why don't you tell the board a little bit about what, why you're here, why you want to speak to the board?
Okay. My name's Shiloh Lovinsky, and on March 8th, I purchased the property at 3 Clark Road here in Tilton. And about a month into cleaning the property, my son was using a chainsaw to clean about 16 feet high by about 20 feet-ish wide of invasive vines and debris, and he slipped upon a gravestone. So we discovered a this gravestone that was dated 1821, I believe, and it's a child. So upon the research that I did preliminarily before, because that was a weekend, we couldn't really discover that it was known, so I reached out to the town hall and really didn't get too far. So I'm here to see what we can do about it, because my first thought is I want to preserve it and protect it and find out if I'm actually Tin Corners Cemetery, because that's what where I'm at, at this point with the research that I've done. And my title company has done a search as far as they can go as well. And we're running into brick walls, so I need your help, please. Because there is something.
What specific help are you looking for from the town?
Well, it should, in my mind, it should be gated and with, the big thing for me is like ancestry.com, right? So people are looking for their ancestors, let's just say, and maybe somebody's been looking for this really well-known engineer from Canterbury that his family is buried on this plot. Maybe. I, I am torn. I'm torn.
It's not a town-owned cemetery.
Okay.
And it's not a town cemetery. It was a private cemetery owned by the property owner up there. I'm sure it was a much larger piece of property at the time, but town doesn't have any ownership there.
I think I explained to Shiloh when she contacted Town Hall that there is a lot, quite a lot of private cemeteries in the town of Tilton that are really governed by state statute and not by town of Tilton. We don't have any authority over what is done except that the state governs how you can treat the cemetery. I did, I did try to reach out and give her New Hampshire Old Graveyard Association, the New Hampshire State Graveyard, and the New Hampshire RSA's. I've spoke with the title company several times. We, if we put up a fence on, on that property, then we're, we're, we need to put up a fence on all the private little cemeteries. And there's, what, 30 some odd of them in Tilton? Shiloh, unfortunately, in this situation, it takes up her entire backyard. And the issue, the issue is that it was not disclosed in any of her deeds. And that's primarily the issue. And that's pretty unfortunate. I'd be upset about that.
And I will also just let you know that I have contacted all of the resources and they led me back here to reach out to the town to see if I could get some support from the town. Those were the words.
Private property.
Have you spoken with the Tilton Historical Society?
Correct.
You have?
Mm-hmm.
And?
And same with the attorney for the deed has, has also been told that we had to circle back, were the words. I have the letter.
So the Tilton Historical, Tilton Historical Society.
Oh, New Hampshire.
No, I'm not talking about New Hampshire. I'm talking about Tilton Historical Society. Have you reached out to John Cirillo and asked them?
He did not return Tom's phone call, unfortunately.
It's not like him.
Nope, not at all.
He must have missed it.
He was grasping at the straw to get out there and look at that.
He's very good at returning calls. I would try him again because that is very unusual.
Yep. And for historical value in historical research, that probably is the way to go on that one.
Because I'm, I'm at a standstill. I, I don't know what to do. I can't do anything with that backyard. I can't put a pool in. I can't utilize it. I can't let my kids throw a football. It, for, let's be honest. I, I don't know where the, they are, you know, like it's, it's, it weighs heavy on all of us.
Mm-hmm.
We're trying to keep it as clean as possible. We keep digging. We're, we're concerned we're going to find more. We're protecting that one stone because it's, it's immaculate. You've seen it. It's immaculate. It's almost surprising how immaculate it is. But we've marked where we found it and we put it in the barn.
The town clerk is amazing.
You have to get up to the podium, Kim. You have to be at a mic.
All right. What I was going to recommend, I know everyone's been in touch with the Hampshire Old Graveyard Association. They have the capability, and this is what I would ask if I were in Shiloh's shoes, they have the capability of bringing out the ground research, I can't remember the term, but to locate where bodies are, because the biggest thing to know to find out is how big or small this is, and then you would have a better idea of what you're playing with. Not, and I'm saying that just so you know what you're dealing with, not that the town of Tilton per se is doing that. Because as they explain, this is private and not public. But I would get New Hampshire Old Graveyard's vault and ask them.
So, so we did.
Yeah.
They are not in the least bit interested. This is not on their radar. They were never looking for this. They, it was not a cemetery they're concerned with. It wasn't the, it's in their mind, not the, the Four Corners, the Tin Corners Cemetery, not even interested. Have, they will, nothing.
Okay.
Yeah. It, like I said, roadblocks everywhere. So I'm here asking for support, some more guidance. What do we do? What do I do?
I will be happy to put another call through and contact my person with New Hampshire Old Graveyard Association and ask about that for you. And then let you know what the, what the determination is. Because my belief is that they're, they're very interested in who, in the, who's buried beneath the ground type thing, as opposed to what's above the ground. Association for Gravestone Studies is more above the ground and the art stuff. These guys are below the ground, you know, the ancestry, the who's there and why. But that might, that might help you out and I'll make a phone call for you.
This family was well-known, you know?
Do you know the name?
Morse, MJ Morse from Canterbury, well-known engineer, bought the property. The child on the grave was Charles Leland. This gravestone is actually in Find Your Gravestone. You can look it up.
Oh, it is?
Yep.
So I know the Historical Society, which just met last night. And they, they do meet once a month on Wednesday, the first Wednesday?
First Wednesday of the month.
Yeah. And that they would be very interested in, I'm sure, in doing some, you know, checking into it. There's a lot of, you know, good people that can find out a little bit more about that graveyard and maybe some of the history of it and start going from there. I see Greg, who's on the society right there. Second Wednesday. So, you know, there are individuals and groups in the town that are not connected to the town that are very interested in, in those things and the history of the town and why it was there. You know, it could be one lone grave or it could be a couple and they, they, I think for the past, what, five, 10 years now, this society, they've been actively researching and storing and finding all this information. So that, and John Cirillo would definitely be it. You can go and I don't know if you have Facebook, but you can join the Historical Society, take a picture of it and put it on there. And I would not doubt that within five minutes, you have a lot of interest in what.
Yeah, I'm sure, but I don't know if you know how busy I've been with that property in the last 12 weeks. I'm trying to do my best, you know, trying to stay above water with everything. I'm, I'm just being pulled in a million directions from, you know, laws about taxes when this happens to you and, and I'm, you know, trying to look every avenue, like even filing the claim against my deed to try to get some money to gate it myself and have, you know, it's a lot of work to keep it clear. Every week I'm out there trying to get those vines away from everything and, you know, there's even pet stones 30 years old out there, you know, it, it was a active cemetery at some point continuously. So.
And I'm sure they would be, there's a lot of very interested people that could help.
And I have the letter from my deed insurance that if this moves forward, that it's recognized as a cemetery, I have an active claim. So therefore that money will go towards keeping the upkeep of it. So, but I'm stumped, you know, because it was non-disclosed. And once I make it disclosed on the deed from this point forward, you know, let's be real.
You're in quite the predicament.
I am, because even if I wanted to sell this, I would have to disclose it going forward at some point. So we have to either recognize it somehow. You know, somebody has to recognize it in good faith. I can't go forward on any level. So.
I, I'm sure they, that the Historical Society would be interested in assisting with trying to find out what, who, where, how many, and stuff like that.
Like Pat said, it's not like
They're great sleuths.
Off in the corner of my yard. It's literally, you step outside my back door and it's my entire, and it abuts both sides, so I can't even utilize both sides of my yard. So.
This was a surprise to you when you moved in?
Non-disclosed. Mm-hmm.
So you didn't tour the property before you bought?
No, we were clearing the property and found the headstone under debris.
16 feet of debris. And it wasn't in the deed.
That's an absolute shame, but I don't support taking care of cemeteries on private property. We have some cemeteries that we are responsible for the maintenance and upkeep.
I'm not asking for that at all.
What are you asking for?
Asking.
Sorry, I walked in.
Yeah, I understand. I'm asking it for one, to be recognized, two, to either help me figure out how we're going to gate it, give it a byway to be recognized for the, for the families, right, somehow? Because it is a well-known family. Is it Tin Corner Cemetery? We still haven't discussed if that's true or not. And guide me, guide me what we're supposed to do. I'm a first-time homeowner, but, you know, I don't even know. I'm getting spun in circles.
I think that the historical society could research it enough to find out whether it's Tin Corner Cemetery or not. And I think that that would be a good start there. We, we can define it as a cemetery. There's no question that it's a cemetery because there's graves there. We can't tell you that it's a cemetery.
Okay.
There's graves there. I mean, what's the definition of a cemetery?
There's lots of places here in town and in the surrounding towns where there is one, two, three headstones just randomly on somebody's property that used to be, Catherine, you have one of those, don't you?
Yeah, it's, it was a family plot for that piece of property in the late 1800s.
Did you have to have it designated in some way? How would that go about?
My father had a deed created for the cemetery itself and the Dodge children own it. It's our cemetery now. And that's deeded at Belknap County, but we did that, you know, he loved that stuff, so that's why he did that. We, we could have just left it there, you know, without it. I mean, we own all the land around it, so, but he wanted it perpetuated. Then a couple of people from the area buried there. So, but it's, you know, the question is, was it a family plot? Probably. Was it a community plot? Maybe. Almost probably the most important questions to, to answer. It's definitely not the Tilton Town Cemetery because we know where that is.
Well, what's questionable, and I have some pictures as well, but what's questionable is you have 1821, 1823, was it? I don't know.
24.
24. And then 20 feet away from it, 30 years ago, you have a pet stone. So it, it's an active plot, but it's
So this might be random.
It's, it's a very thick granite ornate stone. So, I mean, it's a
There's pieces in the ground of other stones.
Of other stones, right. There's plenty of other pieces of stones.
Back then it was Samhain.
Same, the same stand type of stone that Leland, Charles Leland's stone, 1821 to 1824, there are plenty of that type of stone still broken in the cement, in that little plot.
And, and there was a fire there in 2018, so the fire trucks went right over all that debris too. So we don't know, like, how much got broken. Do you know what I mean? There's been a lot of tragedy back there over that whole debris area. And I talked to the fire chief about that too, and he's like, that's exactly where the fire trucks zoomed right in, front and back.
Joe, go ahead.
If I might take a moment to ask Kim a question. Kim, you know about, more about cemeteries and the way cemeteries work. You're the town, you're the town clerk, so perhaps you would have some kind of information for this lady, or not. I don't know.
We've already discussed what information I have. I've discussed with you and with Pat. And I've been in contact with someone with the Hampshire Old Graveyard Association. I've not yet talked with John Cirillo, and that's the next step. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to get in touch with the Hampshire Graveyard person that I've been working with to find out on my end, because we've been discussing about graveyard, what's the actual size of it, et cetera, et cetera. They, I believe they have members that have the tools to discover what's there and why, because it's going to be a question of how big it is. You know, that's worth finding out and delineating. But that's, that's the direction I'm going in. It's, it's not a town one. It's not listed, but we've been following it and.
Thank you very much for that information.
Yep, you're welcome. Is that handled?
Scott.
So Pat, Selectman Dawson and I were just quickly chatting here. We do have to remember that when you go back to the 1820s, that was Samberton.
Yeah.
So I wonder if Samberton has any record of it.
It might be in Runnells history of Samberton, because
It's not.
Have you looked in that?
No.
Because it looks, it talks about a lot of cemeteries that were in town.
But it might be worth asking Samberton if they have any records on that plot. So, because that was, because remember, we weren't incorporated till 1870s. So that, we were all Samberton before then. So Samberton may have some of those records, possibly about that.
It's entirely possible.
Yeah.
So you must know that the, you did deed research back to those years, so you'll know during some of those dates what families lived there. And that would be helpful with the Historical Society, so they know who lived there and like 30 years ago, lived there, you know, 1821 through 1824.
Yeah, we did an extensive search, extensive search with my deed title insurance company. Couldn't find anything.
You must have the names of the people. So if you can gather that together to go ask for, and I know this is
So much work.
So much work, but you, there are a lot of people in town that are involved with the historical that just love helping out with that stuff. They're really good at it and help resolve where things and how to go.
Okay.
And Historical, Samberton, Scott reminded me, has a Historical Society that perhaps they have some information.
Well, we even, we even discovered pictures of this property, of this house that I'm living in, just the box that I'm in, the front piece. And there is the same oak tree and there is the same wall. And it has like this makeshift little fence where it looks like it's the burial. It, can't really see it because it's such a tin photo. It's like on a, it looks like it's a newspaper photo, but it's a copy. And you can see the, the same oak tree. And it's got a little fence right around the wall, the stone wall.
Be really helpful, yeah.
And there's five children that, in that family that passed away. Five. So, yeah.
Kim, you want to say something?
I was going to add briefly, it's not, I didn't find anything in Runnells, but I have downstairs the cemetery book that someone from Sam- But I have downstairs the cemetery book that someone from Samberton put together. I believe it was early, the early 1900s, and it lists the different graveyards in Samberton, in Tilton, Northfield. And the one they, there's one that they list that I can find nothing about, and I believe that may be mentioned in Runnells. There's one that just says Tin Cor. I see a name, and that's it. And that's why I think we're wondering if this may well be it. But, but there's virtually, there's nothing in Runnells to determine that at all.
I know.
We need, maybe Samberton, maybe Samberton has notes.
The Laconia Library has a lot of that information. In fact, on the second floor up there, they have a, in one of the closed-off rooms, they have a card catalog where they fill out cards for everybody. And they even have the cop, the deaths and that of the cop family and that in there. So I think if you reach out, you said to John Sorrell, we can.
He's a good place to start.
It's amazing, the stuff that you put something on there and, and everybody, it's, you know, they just find that information and pour it out to you. And you will get some help, I'm sure. And we'll see what.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Thanks, Sheldon.
Thank you.
All right, next on our list is Selectments Reports, John.
Not much really to report. I'm just scrolling at that, and I have.
Okay, Scott.
Just a reminder that this weekend is the first concert on July 14th. The band is Club Soda for the Hartwell, Savina Hartwell concerts at the amphitheater at Tilton School.
Time?
What is the start time? I believe 6:00 PM, 6:00 PM.
Thanks, Scott. Joe?
I have nothing. It seems like I had something, but I don't have anything. Oh, I have a co-op joint board coming up the end of the month. And I don't have the information in front of me. But that's coming up shortly to vote on the extension of the contract with the individuals that are interested in buying the piece of property adjacent to the incinerator. You know how that plays out.
Thank you. Catherine?
So mine are mostly questions. Have we gone out to bid for assessing services yet?
Not, not as yet. Nope.
Are we going too soon? I know you're busy.
We can, the assessor is due in on Thursday, August 1st to discuss the values with the board. And, and as far as developing the RFP, and I can have that, I can take the last RFP we did. And if you want to add back in in-person reviews, I can put a draft together and invite it to the board to see.
I'm for that.
See it at your next meeting if you want to approve the RFP, and we'll send it out.
Thank you, Jim.
Yep.
Have we heard anything about the cemetery by the causeway? The second, I'm going to call it the second Philbrook Cemetery, or maybe it's the first.
We have not had a reply. No communication.
Which one is that specifically called?
The one that where they moved the houses, rebuilt them, and it's shrubbery.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
What's our next step? Because it's been over a month.
We can send certified, we can try to catch them when they're there.
Is there one property owner or two there?
There are actually three listed. So we did send letters to all three.
We had a conversation with one of those people, didn't we, a couple of years ago?
That's correct, yes.
The father.
So just three listed, is it not that two are for the houses and one is for the common areas? That leases out the common areas too. So they pay like a condo fee because it's a condo. And they're not actual, the people in the houses have to pay for that.
So there are actually, on the parcels, there are three, there are, of course, I don't have it in front of me, but we sent letters to three individuals that were listed differently across the parcels that were owned by the original gentleman that had the work done.
Be talking to the mic, please.
I am. You can't hear me? So we had sent out the letters to the people on record of those parcels. That's what we had done. But we could send out certified.
It might be like a condominium trust that owns the property that they're a part of.
Possible.
Share own the property.
They would show up on the tax bill.
My wife and I share on the property.
Yes, same property.
Same property.
But if you have two owners on one parcel, a condominium, you have common areas, common shared utilities and that. And that is usually it's some type of trust or a association. And there's somebody in charge of that. And that would typically be the person that would be responsible for the common areas.
Nonetheless, nobody responded, correct?
That's correct.
There you go.
Unless there's a management company.
My next is a suggestion where we're contemplating taking this one and possibly one on Clock Road if we find more out about it. My suggestion is that we ask Public Works to give us a list of the necessary maintenance in all of the cemeteries we currently maintain beyond regular landscaping. I mean, stones, they need cleaned, upright, other trees that need to be cut, walls that need to be fixed, gates that need, et cetera, et cetera, that sort of thing. So we have a better idea when it comes down to those discussions. How much more are we going to pile for responsibility and work? And then there's a cost associated with maintaining these cemeteries properly. I think we should have them compile that list now.
Good point.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of items. First on the list is the parking. I'm going to pass out a picture. This was a very old design before we gave it some thought about, this is, it was blank canvas and then we striped it. What I'm going to ask is that we survey one line for us so that we can get exactly where we own versus where the Sanos own.
I'll explain it in a second.
Thank you.
Don't pay any attention to the lines right now because of the map.
Thank you, Pam.
So if you look at 43 is actually the fire station. And we own so many feet from the fire station over. This was a blank canvas when we took over. And if you look over to 41 and 41A, you can see a muddled asphalt. And that's when we originally took over where Sano owned. Right now, we want to take the two spaces because we agreed to that almost a month, a little over a month, right? We want to take the two spaces next to where the number four is on 42 and allow people to travel in the back so that they can get to the back lot there. Well, we can't do that because in discrepancy here is that line. We've met with the Sanos and asked if we could move it just slightly so that it agrees with where that line is. And hemmed and hawed for quite a few and tried to come up with the solution. And we did, we're not able to come up to a resolution here. So the only other way that we could figure out where our line is divided here is to have that line surveyed.
But not if we're going to that one line, if we're going to do that, why wouldn't we survey the three lines plus the fire station?
I'm okay with that. Fine with that. But that's the most important one here. So if we want to do the, whatever lines you want to do is fine, but that's the most important line if we could get.
I mean, if we're going to do this, it's.
Let's do it the right way. Yep.
Yeah, and the other one is, you know, where is our southern boundary of Center Street? That retaining wall has been the bane of our existence for quite a while. That, well, I shouldn't even call it the retaining wall, the little wall by Tryon.
Mm-hmm. Dwight, so have them do Center Street as well?
I don't know, what does everybody think?
So according to this, it looks like the couple of the, Center Street is ours. So it looks like some of the parking spaces there encroached on our.
The parking spaces, again, the parking, I know, but the parking spaces, again, were striped after we leased it for 15 years.
I'm talking about Center Street.
These orange lines.
Orange lines are, they're not correct. That's a GIS thing, and trust me, knowing my new job, it's not correct.
So we should have that because if it did match this, we would need parking spaces over here and there. So let's have it properly.
Find out what we own.
Find what it is and have it properly, not just surveyed, but staked as, where they put the pin, pinned, surveyed and pinned.
Pinned?
Yeah.
We'll find all the points on all corners and then pin that or search back. I didn't survey for a while.
Yes, so when they drive steel pins in, they're official markers. And then they can always be found with a metal detector and as opposed to just serving it, marking it where somebody can.
Well, it gives GPS too, right?
Yes, you can pull off of like a pole, you can use different areas to pull off, and then you put a pin that's below. So no one will hit that.
So which?
The rock and the paint tree.
Right. Which lines again do you want to, all that we own on our parking lot in Center Street?
I would.
Yeah.
Okay. Kim, you got that?
I do.
And who do you, you want to go back to Crowsey?
He does a good job for us.
Yeah, like you're saying, Pat, it looks like the lines are just an overlay that, like this.
He's kind of used to researching Tilton stuff.
Right. Next on my list is this here, we've been, this travel trailer has been moving around in a lot of different spots, but now we have a trailer with a vehicle on it. This is in our municipal lot where our vehicles, town vehicles park opposite, the opposite side that our town vehicles park. And we need to do something about it.
Show the chief.
You can have him.
Oh, yeah. I knew that is.
Do they own both? Do they, do they own both vehicles?
Well, the RV might be new, but yes, I think it is. They're ideal haul. He was our plow, the guy that was plowing in the winter, remember? That lot that was being plowed.
Oh, yeah. Oh, really?
Yep. That with him.
So he actually lives downtown?
Correct. He doesn't have a permit for the SUV, but obviously we do not give stickers for trailers or.
RVs.
It extends beyond the bounds of the parking space as well.
Yes.
So that technically becomes a safety hazard.
Yep. I can look into that.
Okay. Next on my list is Birch Street. You remember a long, quite a long time ago, and I think Catherine and Joe would probably know that we had an issue with drainage coming around on Birch Street, coming down to Deer Street. And there was, there was a swale in drainage put down at the bottom, almost across from Suzadellis's house. Well, that, there are new people that moved in about a year and a half ago where it actually makes that curve. And so the water coming down the hill and just where it makes that curve on 5 Birch, it goes into the driveway because there's no longer a swale. So that, that needs to be repaired. Tried to explain there was a swale there at one time, but I'm sure the plow over the years has taken it up.
Oh, that water was runoff from the road?
Well, the road in the hill. There was two different places it came down from because.
But it all ran in the road ultimately.
Right, yes.
So my question is, can we berm it before the water comes off the hillside onto the road?
Yes.
Rather than putting in a swale, just put in a berm there.
We should have Pete and.
Well, yeah, they're going out, they're going out tomorrow. Shane and Pete are going to go out tomorrow.
They'll take care of it.
Yep.
Yep.
They'll be all over it.
Selectman Ruggles has already mentioned the concert series. But I do want to mention, unfortunately, we will not be having the senior bus going up and down because we haven't purchased one yet.
We haven't purchased the senior bus yet?
Almost, but we hadn't. It was close. But we haven't found one suitable for the town of Tilton yet. So next is the sidewalk. I made the corrections on the sidewalk policy, and I believe Amy has put them in your folder.
They're actually right in the beginning, behind the agenda.
I just made a mess of mine, so.
In your first tab. Right behind the agenda, Joe. Right behind the agenda in the first tab.
Here, no, no. Yep. Yes. Thank you.
Three different places. One was three feet from any obstructions. And then all items placed on the sidewalk must be removed no later than 10:00 PM each night. And then under D, no construction or use of machineries on sidewalk and use of electrical cords across the sidewalks is prohibited unless authorized by the Board of Selectmen. cords across the sidewalks is prohibited unless authorized by the Board of Selectmen. Everybody okay with that?
So under C, said associated costs for removal, should we put removal and disposal? You know, and clearly say that, you know, we're, we may, we're going to remove the stuff, but it doesn't say that we're going and will be disposed of, you know, because they, okay, you removed my stuff, now where is it?
And I would ask that because of the nature of this, that we have a public hearing and notify everybody that is potentially affected from park to track or park to park?
We have one scheduled, I believe, right?
Okay. If we don't have one scheduled, I'd like to have one.
No, absolutely have it. Catherine had mentioned it last week, the last meeting, to have one scheduled.
Madam Chair, should, in E, should we also put in skateboards? Because there's wiggle room there. If skateboards is not in, they can skateboard.
Don't we already have policy?
We do have skateboards.
Yeah, but it's not specifically listed. It would be real easy to add it in.
Oh, it's not specific?
No, it's not.
It says bicycles, scooters and motorized bicycles.
No, I mean, don't we have a separate policy for that?
Yeah.
But if we're going to add this here, he's right.
Yeah, just to have it because you don't want to have that, that wiggle room.
Now, if I make these corrections, does that mean next week you'll find something different that will?
Maybe, maybe.
But we can still schedule the public hearing.
Unicycles, so.
I mean, you all looked at C and E last week. We corrected.
I'm just about.
You catch my point? Oh, I know. I get that.
The disposal.
I get that, Joe. I am too.
Otherwise, we're going to collect a lot of stuff.
So for the public, the announcement of the public hearing, which probably should be August now, because next we have to bring this in to get approved again, because we have disposal and skateboards will have to change.
We can schedule that for the fifteenth.
I'll change these and we'll get the approval and signs on the twenty-fifth and then August fifteenth, we'll have the public hearing. And then the summer's pretty much over and then.
You could do it next week because remember when you have a public hearing, you gather information and if people want you to change something, you can change it.
But.
Or not. We could have the public hearing, let's say at six o'clock, five o'clock, we could look at it and go, yeah, it's good.
Put this with the announcement going door to door down to the businesses?
Yeah.
Without signatures of the Board of Selectmen?
Sure.
Okay.
Because we don't want.
With.
I get it.
With the amendments we just discussed?
With the amendments that we discussed.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll put that back to the twenty-fifth, six o'clock.
Up this month?
I would have put it at six o'clock because we have, no, that's right, Lauren's coming in the first, okay. I want Lauren to have a lot of time with the residents that intend to come in for public. Okay. All right, I will draw up something and go down. So the twenty-fifth, that gives me two weeks to get the message out from railroad to railroad. Okay, to businesses. Selectmen, anymore? Anything else for the reports? Welcome back, by the way, Chief. Do we want to go over any of the job description reviews?
Are you asking, do we want to go over them tonight or?
Yes. Do we want to go over them tonight or do you want to hold them over to another time? We have the Town Administrator's Report and then we have non-public, which we have a few things under non-public.
I'm hold over. I vote for hold it over.
You're a holdover? John, John's a holdover?
Holdovers fine.
Scott's a holdover. All right, it's a holdover.
Okay.
And Tim's a holdover. Okay, Town Administrator.
Okay, well, that's going to shorten things up a little bit this evening. So just some updates. First of all, the, the issue that I brought to the board at your last meeting regarding the hauler, the letter that I'd prepared for the board to send was effective and the hauler complied and is now tipping under the town's account and we're back in business. The air conditioning installation, so we are about halfway done with it. There's going to be a lift being delivered tomorrow. That's going to be parked outside of Town Hall here and hopefully, Chief, we can have some patrols go by over the weekend. But they're going to be working Friday night, Sunday, Monday night, and they hope to finish up Wednesday night, the seventeenth. And then also, which we've had the Northfield Mechanic Intergovernmental Agreement here to look at for a few weeks, is the, does the board want to act on that this evening?
Fine with it.
It's, it's as, as needed. It's an as-needed activity, so if we need to access them, we have a method of doing so and I'll make sure that we have a copy to pass around for signature. The, as Pat already mentioned, the, the job descriptions, by the way, are in your binder for you to look at, but the land use coordinator job description, the health zoning code enforcement job description and the revised building inspector job description are all in there. In addition, we had our staff meeting this week and, and I announced the beginning of our 2025 budget development and I'll be working with the department heads over the next month or so on the departmental budgets and then be bringing it to the Board and Budget Committee as drafts as we go through the process this fall of the twenty-five budget development. The one thing I really would like to see come out of this is a, the recycling revolving fund be set up through a warrant article at town meetings so that we can direct revenues from recycling into that revolving fund that would then be used for the purchase of highway equipment so that, that we can balance between recycling revenues and capital reserve funds to make sure we're raising the money that we need to raise on an annual basis for equipment, much like what we do with the detail fund at the PD. So in any event, that is getting started now. I've already done some pro formas, looking at what we have. I would ask the board just to be thinking about what guidelines you would like to set in terms of any sort of thresholds or not to exceed or reductions, merit, that sort of thing. So if you give that some thought and as we go through the process, we'll have plenty of time to discuss that. Obviously, the, the number one driver of the budget is personnel and personnel-related costs. That remains about sixty-three percent of our budget. In addition to that, moving on to the next item, the, the chief and lieutenant were successful in raising a, getting a grant agreement for thirteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars for body worn cameras. And on page two, item six B, I have a note about that. We need to execute the, the grant agreement, which would be for the board, and I have provided a, a motion for the board as we need to provide minutes in accompanying the grant agreement. So if someone would like to move?
Go ahead, Joe.
I make a motion. We enter into a grant agreement with the state of New Hampshire Department of Safety for the purchase of body worn cameras up to the amount of thirteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and adhere to the provisions of the grant agreement, including the special provisions on exhibits A, B, and C pertaining to the scope of services, method of payment, and special provisions, including a demnification and further to designate the chair to sign the grant agreement for the board.
I have a motion and a second. Go ahead.
Okay. Where does the rest of that money come from?
So, so the, there's actually, so this is, this represents fifty percent of the cost of the body worn cameras. We have identified within, we have three areas that we can access. One is some of the forfeiture funds. The second is part of the detail fund and the third would be out of the budget, the operating budget of the PD. So we feel.
You have that money?
We do.
Available to us from the police department budget?
We do currently, yes.
How much out of the detail fund are you going to take?
Well, so the chief and I were planning on coming and discussing at a subsequent meeting as it related to the budget about not just the body worn cameras, but also the, the tasers and the other equipment that would need to be under contract going forward and how they're going to manage that. So, so we're, you know, we're looking at, at accessing three sources so that it can cover the amount and not burden either the, burden neither the detail fund nor the operating budget for the PD.
That was a wronged about answer. Okay, thank you.
That's, that's the truth and, and, you know, it's a, it's a work in progress. But this is fifty percent of the cost that we do not have to pay by entering into this agreement.
But your minutes, your minutes says that your last estimate was approximately eighteen thousand.
It's actually, for the body worn cameras, it's twenty-six thousand and change.
I would say eighteen on my paper.
There's eighteen thousand in here.
So originally.
So when did, when did they go up? Because that's quite a jump.
They've actually come down quite a bit, but there's.
Or is this a typo?
That was wrong information. It was right information at one point in time, wrong information most recently. So the, the company that we're dealing with, as you might recall, the chief's had difficulty getting solid quotes from and then getting them to separate out the quotes so that they're specific where we can go after grants for the body worn cameras. They had everything consolidated and I don't know if you recall, but one of the first quotes, it was well over a hundred thousand dollars and they've been going back and back and back many times.
I'd go back to the stone age.
So they've been going back many times and trying to get this sorted out. It's taken quite a while and in this, in the same process, the company has gone through changes of reps. So it's, it's not been easy to get to where we are. So really what we're, what you're faced with is, you know, do you want to take advantage of fifty percent of the cost of the body worn cameras?
Are the old cameras worth anything? Then what happens to them when they're not?
All right, so the, the plan was to.
You're going to have to use my.
This is, this is more, it's pretty complex is what it is. So we have a, we have a contract with Axon, it's a five-year contract. This went way back before my time and this started with the tasers. Once the contract's over, then your, your equipment might still work, but it's not under the warranty. So if things fail, break, anything like that, but also if they're used as in a taser during anything like that, the coverage from taser isn't there. So a lot of it is, when we got the first quote, it was about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars and that was the tasers to replace all the tasers that we have now. The, you know, we started this program, I want to say, the cameras were back in twenty fifteen. The tasers were a little bit before that. So what we decided to do is keep the, we'll just talk with body worn cameras, we're going to keep the cam, well, actually what we did was did a little research and we found out it's called the TAP program. And what taser allows you to do is you, I think you probably have heard that if you've dealt with this contract a lot, but the TAP program is after so much, so much time, they reissue new tasers and, and things like that. You just pay it like a bundle, so it's a little bit more money. That was, that was not happening. So we, we actually did some research and found out we didn't get this TAP program or this re-up on some of the cameras. So instead of purchasing sixteen cameras, because the problem is, is when we purchased the cameras back in fifteen and throughout the contracts in the last, what, ten years or so or close, we never had cameras for admin. So I don't have a camera, Lieutenant doesn't have a camera, there's a, none of the part-timers have cameras and that's a liability. There's been, you remember I was in a, in a car accident and everybody asked, where's your camera footage? Because that's part of the deal. I don't have a camera, I don't, but I'm a working chief. I feel as a town, liability wise, we should all have cameras. So we kind of put together everything, but it was just too much money. It's a hundred and forty thousand dollars for tasers and cameras to do this, to do this. So we are looking at, doing the research, we found out that they didn't tap, so they are going to send us not, eight brand new cameras, but they were not going to have a full warranty on those cameras, which is fine, and those will go to myself, admin, people that are not on the road every day, all day, going to those calls. The, the nine cameras we're talking about here, the twenty-six thousand that we got the, the grant for, so it's half of that, thirteen, those will be the officers' cameras, the nine cameras that will go to the eight officers and the one SRO. So we were able to slim that down, get all the cameras that we need at a cost. The only bad part of that, bad side of that is if those nine camera, or the, the cameras that we, we, or the eight cameras that we were getting from the TAP program that aren't under warranty, if any of those break, we'll just have to pay cost and fix those. I can say right now, we haven't had any cameras that have, we've had to send it and break, they're, they're really good, they're, they're well put.
And now, yeah. I was going to say the hundred and forty thousand, that's also a multi-year. So, so the eighteen thousand that you're looking at now that I recall was one of the first year payments. So that was what we were going to have to pay in this calendar year on one of these. But, but the, but that, that's the way they structure these, so you're paying over a multi-year for these. So the chief has figured out how they can best pare down, use what they have. There are other places that repair or replace parts, where you can buy replacement parts for some of these things. So, so it, it's not going to be the full service kind of thing that, that we would have access to otherwise, but it's, it, it sounds very reasonable and, and it gives them the coverage that they need.
Yeah, I mean, that's same with the tasers. We're just going to have to go back. So we first got the tasers, we only had eight tasers and we'd have to switch them out every day. You'd have to, you'd put them in the little safe that was in the common area of the police department secured. And when you'd start your shift, you would take your taser and you would start your duty, you would spark test it and you would put it in your holster. And you, the only problem with that is officers figured to take it out of their holsters, they put their duty belts in their lockers, you have to track them down. Officers maybe don't have tasers on details when they, something goes on, things like that, not the biggest, there's, there's worse things. So we'll have to probably revert back to that, but I think with these tasers that we have now, they still do work. There's some of them that the screens, you cannot see, you'd have to get them refurbished, but there's some of them that do. So with this plan that Tim and I will talk for the board at a later date with the tasers, we would be, you know, look at going back to the eight, slimming down, but keeping the ones that are good out of the ones we have now and using those for admin and then probably just the detectives. And if, again, just like those cameras, if they go down and we just, we just have to pay for them or to figure out some parts and things like that. So trying to make it work the best we can, we're not spending a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So we slimmed it down. work the best we can, we're not spending a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So we slimmed it down altogether, roughly around fifty. So you're, and then we try to get some grant money, and that's what, what Lieutenant and I were able to do, so.
How many total cameras do we have?
Uh, total should be close to, what is it, sixteen, seventeen, sixteen? Yeah. And that will cover myself, lieutenant, the, you know, the detectives, patrol, and then one to use for part timers to be able to come in and just grab a camera if a part timer comes in like here.
I'm, if I recall, our procedure for the cameras described that when people come in, that they take them and they put them into the charging stand and automatically downloads.
Correct.
Why would we need sixteen if we don't have sixteen people on duty?
Well, because those cameras are specifically for those, for those, that person. You have to assign that to it. So if I have two cameras, and there's three of us working, well, it's going to be assigned to you as, and I have to go in the system and put you in there. That's your camera. And then if I don't take you out and put you in, and John comes in and grabs your camera, well, then when he goes to a scene, it's going to say your name on it, and they're going to think it's your, your camera. You wear your camera maybe somewhere different. It's going to be upside down. It's going to be, so every camera is specific to that person, and we have to change. And also, it's not just the camera, it's a license that goes with that camera. So there's basic licenses that go that, because the cameras are nothing. They don't cost anything. It's the cloud. It's the memory. It's the storage fee is what costs the money.
The more cameras we have, the more cloud space. We, we, I mean, have we ever weeded out some of the cloud space?
Yeah. Oh, yes. We were in the process of doing that. It's just hard, because you have to retention. It's RSA. You have to retain a lot of that, that, you know, all the footage. If you lose that footage, or it's not there, it's evidence. So you have to go through, and that's a process in itself. But no, what that means is that when everybody, if they're on shift, it's, it's different with a TASER. Yes, you can grab a TASER. It's not assigned that number. The, the cameras are different. The cameras have, it's specific for each person to grab those. You could say, yeah, grab Barry's camera for the day for the part timer, and have Dicky, a part timer, grab that camera, but it's, he doesn't have access to go review his video or do anything with the video, because it's, it's her cloud. It's her, it's her license. And that's a problem we've had. We don't have enough licenses for enough people. So it's a whole package thing. It's more liability also.
So you have to change the whole procedure then, right?
Yeah, and we have to look at the policy, because right now, the policy doesn't state that everybody has one, because when they purchase the cameras, uh, back when they started-
Some people signed them in, and when they were done with their shift, they put them back in the charger, automatically downloaded what they had.
And charges it, and it downloads the memory. Yep, downloads all your footage. And then in the morning, when you come back in for your shift, you grab your camera that has it labeled, and the camera's labeled with your initials on it, and that's, that's your camera. We've had people go to the academy, and we didn't have enough licenses. We got some new officers, and we were able to take tho, that camera and switch their name, but when they got out of the academy, then we had to find a camera for them, and we've been kind of leapfrogging everywhere to get cameras. So it's a process.
Seems like they're kind of roping us in. You know, that, that, you know, it should be camera one who had it this time and who had, I don't understand what, what type of license do you need to opt, take a video with a camera? I mean, is that, or it's not an FCC license? Where-
It's a license that you-
Is it, is it the manufacturer that's saying that? Because we're getting on the hook for a lot of money now.
Yep. And that's going to be there anywhere. I mean, I, I need to get a quote from any other, any other camera plate. The problem is, is obviously the way the world it's become. When, when the cameras were brand new, nobody was buying the cameras. We were probably one of the first departments that cut the cameras in 2015. In the state of New Hampshire, we were. And I can guarantee, it was expensive, but it's not like it is now. They have the market. They, but if you remember the Acton-
Is one of the best stocks to buy. They're-
Oh, yeah.
High amounts of profits.
You're gonna make a lot of money if you had stock in there. But, but I, I'm more than willing to show you anytime, John. If you wanted to come, I could show you how that system really works and, and understand a little bit more of how it works. Or a patrol officer would get a basic license. That's basic. I mean, you can watch your videos. You can go in there, watch your body camera videos so that you can do your stuff. That pretty much just gives you access to go in there, look at your video. Then there's a pro license. That's an admin license. That's what I have, and the lieutenant has. I actually, right now, currently share my license with the prosecutor so that he can review, because we don't have enough licenses to get around. So we're always trying, and now that we've been, we've been down staff, now that we're up, you know, we're almost getting to full staff, we really don't have enough licenses for people to, to share.
It's the license, not necessarily the-
The camera.
It's the, or not the, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's a camera. You could have sixteen cameras, but if you only have ten licenses, well, then, then six of those cameras are dead in the water. You can't do anything with those. You have to have the license that go with the camera, and that's kind of what this package, if you look, you know, if I give you the quote and things like that, through that, you, you can see exactly how much that cost and the difference. So this has been an ongoing thing for at least eight or nine months right now, if not longer, going back and forth with Axon. It's, it hasn't been pleasant, but, so.
I still don't quite understand. Once the camera is downloaded, it's downloaded to the-
Cloud.
Licenses, the person's file, and they can look at those. So for somebody else to use that camera, they would also have to have a license to look at their files. Why is it necessary for them to look at their files?
To review their body worn camera footage for calls?
Edit it?
No, you can't. They cannot edit it. The only person, no one can-
Is it necessary for them to look at it? Isn't it more necessary for the prosecutor to look at it?
Uh, reviewing your body worn camera footage, if you went to a scene, if you, there's a lot that goes on in the scene. Let's say it's a DWI, and you're writing a report, and you want to refer back to your body worn camera. If you want to watch a video that when you have to go to court and testify, you want to make sure that you can remember, because you, you handle a lot of calls, and you might not go to that case, you might not go to that court case for another year or two years, depending on the case.
Couldn't you, with the prosecutor, give them access to look at their file?
No. I mean, I would have to give them my license. And my license, I can erase, and I can do things that, that other people cannot do. So I have a pro license, and I would not give them access to that, because I would, that would be safe.
Turn it on for them to review it, so they could go refresh their memories?
I would have to have them in my office, sitting at my desk, and have them review their, to review that. That wouldn't, that wouldn't be acceptable. I mean, that wouldn't happen, no.
Seems like we've come a long, expensive way from paper and pencil.
Yeah, it has, but that's the way the world is. And if you go to any of the department, that's what they're, that's kind of everybody that, what they're dealing with. And I mean, it's going to be mandated to go to body worn, body worn cameras. Manchester PD is dealing with it. State Police is dealing with it. It's the license.
Creative, if you will?
Oh, we've been, I mean, the creative side to do it is to get a server, like we've have, to, to, to slim down the usage, because they can over, they can overcharge, they can charge us for the usage that we have on how much storage we hold. So that's what you're going to get hit on. So what we've talked to Tim and every, is, is getting something like a storage off of the cloud and dumping those videos into a storage, into evidence, our evidence, so that we can slim down and we don't get charged. Now, Axon has actually been nice. I mean, we've technically been out of contract. They could turn our, our service off, or they could really get us for all of the the gigabytes that were, were over right now, and they're not doing that. Or a lot of it's on them switching vendors and things, but, so.
Right. We need to-
So I guess the question is, does the board want to act on this tonight on the, the grant? So again, it's fifty percent of the body worn camera portion, thirteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Well, we have a motion, right?
The motion's on the floor.
Right. So I'm gonna call a question. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
All right. And then just a couple of other updates. The, as in non-public, we'll discuss the land use technician candidate process, but we have completed the interviews and are ready to talk to the board about that. The fence issues, we're still going back and forth with trying to find a fence company for both Vest Pocket Park and, and for the Civil War Monument. Superior did respond briefly, but we've not been able to get ahold of them since. And, and I've called additional fence companies. One company looked very promising. They came out, they reviewed it twice, and they declined a bit. So, so I just got another name of a company tonight from Catherine. I'll seek those out, but we're having to go further and further away from this area to find somebody that, that is willing to do it. And outside of that, the, just some other, some other updates, which you can, you can read in terms of, you know, we were pretty successful in completing the evaluation process on time. Didn't get a hundred percent, but very close to it. And then I've got updates for you regarding the town administrator search, and which I can cover with you in non-public. So outside of that, unless you have any questions for me, that's what I have.
That's it.
Is, if could be here, I was wondering, what can we do about vehicle noise? I live on Main Street on a hill. I get woken up all night with explosions regularly. These are not just little backfires. These are, you've heard them. The, there's like an electric blue-colored car. There's a silver VW, I think, Passat. There is a bunch of them. And these are explosions that are clearly exceeding what, we have an ordinance on noise, and they're exceeding that. It's, something's got to be done. It's living on Main Street or any other street, or even they do it downtown. You've heard it, you know? We have to start doing something about that, or figure out how we're gonna do it. But it can't, it can't go on. It's miserable living.
We cannot be everywhere at all times. So we all have to work together with that. So if you see something, and you, and you know what the vehicle is, call and tell us what the, the vehicle, the make, the model, what it is, what time they're coming by. You gotta remember, we have eight people. We may be on a typical night like tonight. I will tell everybody right now that's listening. We have two people that are running right now, from all the way from Franklin, the town line, all the way to Mosquito Bridge, all the way to Sammerton. So if we get somebody that's downtown, that doesn't mean that we're right here at all the times. We all have to work together. We have to, we have to communicate. But what I put out with the staff, we had a staff meeting probably about six months ago, to really crack down once summer hit and try to figure out with the prosecutor the backfiring. It's called a two-step. And what it is, is they're Volkswagens, they're Audis, they're German-made cars, and they mix, and they, and they do attune to the vehicle. And what it does is it causes it to backfire. And when it's backfire, it sounds just like a shotgun. And if you remember, we had the same thing that happened at the school. Somebody was going through the school, and we had an alert, and we had, what, fifteen, twenty police officers rush over there. School got released early. We had to walk kids to school, bus, uh, all the sporting events and everything were canceled. You know, I had somebody call me from the state after that, like, what's going on? And I explained to them, like, there needs to be something. There's noise ordinances. There's other things, but there needs to be something, you know, for us, it's disorderly. I mean, excessive noise, we have an ordinance for that. So we can get them on that. It's just when they drive by us, we obviously have to hear it. It has to go on. And I know at one time, we talked about a decibel meter. Well, you can, they can incriminate themselves. You can't then get out of your car. You have to be, use your experience to be able to pull them over and then write them if, if you think that is, exceeds the noise, which you can do. But at any time, we can't have a decibel meter to walk up and say, okay, now make your car backfire, and I'm going to hold this meter out there. That's incriminating yourself. You know, it's, it's, it's a legal search is what it comes down to. So we've already gone through a lot of these things, but we just need help both ways. So if there's somebody that has a blue car, silver car, Audi, whatever time, please.
I can tell you a time span-
Yep.
Welcome to sit in my driveway back, behind the crab apple tree.
Yep.
And, and they will go by, right in the window. There's a window of time. And it's, it's horrible. I, I don't know, you know, who, you, yes, you live on School Street, so there's a hill there, and that, and they deliberately-
But I'm used to it by now.
And we're trying to ramp it up. I mean, we got that, that message board, that, that sign that we were able to use for ninety days, and we put it in various locations. And we actually, Caleb Hill, because of our public meeting, there was a lot of people that were concerned about the speed, and we had a couple, a couple officers up there a few times, and we actually, several, several stops and, and for, for at least twenty miles over the speed limit. So we were able to write a, a few people and, and really get out there. And, and that, that sign helps a lot, because it's another cloud thing. It tells you what time of day and the speed, and it actually sends an alert to your phone. It actually takes a picture of the vehicle. It's really, really nice, but they're really expensive. So we were able to use that and, and try to see where our hot zones are, and, and if it was just by sight.
Isn't the issue?
Well, it is in town. There's a lot of places that are speeding, but I understand what you're saying, the backfiring.
The backfiring intentional, and it's when they're actually slowing down, coming down the hill, come off the light-
Yep.
Going there, and it's, it's cooling real bad. And, you know, I understand the decibel meter, but we have an ordinance that says that would be, it's, I think it says that, that would be considered annoying-
Excessive.
Or excessive or annoying to the regular person. And-
Again, you're a regular person. I'm not a regular person by the law. Police officers aren't a regular person, so I'd have to go and say, and that's why we need the public to say, hey, this is what's going on. And obviously, I have a complaint from you that's stating, but if they, there's no reason for anybody to drive by and backfire their car at two, three, eleven o'clock at night.
Everybody recorded a plate number of the vehicles that are doing it, and the time that they did it, and submitted all that stuff. It would become enough evidence that they're being annoyed by it.
Yes. If you wrote a complaint, and you, and you filled something out, and you had a video that showed that, we could investigate that and, and go from there. Exactly. I mean, obviously, we like to-
The source of the noise.
Well, that's it.
And if they were, like, staking out certain areas, hotspots for it, and they drive by, they, I mean, the police car is there, and they go by and they do it. Is that sufficient? The word that, yes, they drove by and they did this? I saw them commit this crime?
If the officer's there, yes. But you're saying, after, after the fact, or what do you, I didn't understand exactly.
Let's say a police officer is sitting on the side street behind a bush. Car goes by,
Yep.
Bang, bang. Doesn't record it, but sees it and hears it.
Yeah, we're different. We, we can, we can testify to that in the court of law. We can write that in our report, and we can, we can say, I mean, that's the same as speed.
So if we can, if people know, some of these people that are doing this go to and from work at certain hours-
Yep.
And you can give them a window between eight-thirty, nine o'clock every day, this guy-
We can put a direct patrol to the officers, which, given the PD, and you looked in the patrol room, we have a marker board, big marker board. It has direct patrol, and we try to keep that updated of our trouble areas and place that we need to be. And that would go right on there. This time, this time, we put an email out, looking for this vehicle, and most likely, if that happens all the time, that we're probably going to be nine, yeah, we're going to catch the person. So, thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Chief.
I think there's other residents that get the same thing. Nice.
Yep.
At least they're not doing wheelies.
Any other business to come before us in a public session? Greg, anything? There's nobody online except us. Go ahead. Greg, go on up to the mic, if you would, please.
Greg Novolder, one sixty-one School Street. I don't know if you saw the Concord Monitor today, but there is an article about revals in Conway, and they're really, they, they got the commercial real estate was undervalued versus the residential, and they're taking the pipe on it, and now they've filed with the state. So it's a, it's a poorly written article, but I think it's timely for what we're going to probably go through. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Which papers?
Concord Monitor.
In today's?
Yeah, actually, I'll leave it if you want to make it.
Well, that'd be great. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you. I have just one tiny little thing. My minutes are gone. My past minute.
Okay.
Ask them, please not to, I know it's getting full, but ask them to please not to take up. I just went to reference. They're gone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other that come before us in a public meeting? Seeing none, like to make a motion to go into non-public at time being six fourteen per RSA ninety-one, A, colon, three, two, A, and B. The dismissal and promotion of compensation of any public employer, disciplining of such employer, the investigation of any charges against him or her, unless the employee affected, one has a right to a public meeting, and two, request that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted, and two, be the hiring of any person as a public employee.
Second.
I have a second roll call vote.
Desmond, yes.
Scanlon, yes.
Ruggles, yes.
Dawson, yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, time being eight oh two. I make a motion. Oh, we already made a motion.